Good evening. I invite you to join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance is issued by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Gary.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Yep. Got a couple of things I gotta talk about just because there's something that's going on. The first Streets Alive event of 2019 will take place on June 23rd from noon to 5:00 o'clock in the downtown Fargo Morad area. The festival encourages people in the community to live an active life filled with biking, running, inline skating, and all other sorts of human-powered movement. Come celebrate active play, active transportation, music, and more. The second Streets Alive will be held on August 25th. So this is our first one that's gonna be downtown. Inspections. The inspections Department and Board of Appeals have completed reviews of the 2018 set of building codes and will be implementing those codes in August and September. In addition to keeping Fargo up to date on all building codes, these new and updated codes give contractors and owners additional new options for their projects. It also helps keep the owners, citizens, contractors, and public safe in construction areas and in all public buildings. And Bruce, you said you liked the new set? It's a good set? Yep, good. The Industrial Park Tap Ride Service proposal approved by City Commission recently will be tentatively beginning service in August 4th. NDSU orientation sessions begin June 13th and continue through July and August. Matbus has set up an orientation session for all the new students to inform them about the service of a matbus. The other thing that's important for the public to know is the Special Assessment Task Force with these two commissioners is having a public forum tomorrow at 5:30 at Fargo Dome and Thursday at 5:30 in the Oak Room at the Fargo-Cast Public Health in order to gather citizen input. The forums will be broadcast live via the city's Facebook page. The forums will review the history of special assessments in Fargo, discuss consensus points reached by the task force, and solicit public comments on potential alternatives to current policies. The residents also can send input about special assessments through the city's website starting tomorrow and continue through June 28th. Citizens' ideas will be summarized and presented to the Fargo City Commission for consideration. I think you guys have been working on this for how many months now? Is it?
Ten.
Ten? This last part is really wants public involvement or whatever, public would like to come and say some things they can and they can look at what the task force has been doing. So I think it's a great time if the public wants to get involved, make their comments known. Finally, we're gonna show you a video that showcases the city's Employee Recognition Event held in May. The city recognized 129 employees who collectively have 1,540 years of service to a Fargo residence.
Very thankful to the city of Fargo to employ me all these years. Asked my wife to marry me right after I got this job, and that was one of the reasons I think she said she would marry me. We had a couple of kids, and I got grandkids now, and I attribute that to a lot of the city of Fargo, keeping me employed for that many years. So I'm very gracious to the city and the taxpayers for letting me work here this long. I love it when I reach out to any one of you as an employee and ask for something, and I've never been disappointed that you all try to get that back to me as quickly as possible. It's not the resume you build, it's your work and how you're doing your work and how you do it to make our city one of the finest places to work. So I thank you for all of that and appreciate it very much. Starts with the mayor to the department heads, and I think that that keeps people here. They're keeping us here for a reason. You know, we need them and they need us, and we treat each other with respect. I think that's what makes it go. If you can be gracious and just happy with what you have and we do our job, it'll work out well for you. It has for me. Very thankful to the city of Fargo to employ me all these years. Asked my wife to marry me.
It's almost good for twice, huh? Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving item 26 to the consent agenda to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 3rd, 2019 regular meeting?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Grinberg. Motion in second. And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items 1 through 27 excluding item 26, which has been moved to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Garrett Grinberg.
Quiet night.
Okay, roll call vote please.
Gary.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand. Mahoney.
Aye. Here, did you wanna add the?
Oh, excuse me, I'm gonna add two items to the agenda, which will be a discussion about the Fargo editorial we had seen in the Fargo Forum, and then Eric Johnson has a report on opioid lawsuit that's going forward. Sorry about that. That's a sedition to what's gonna be tonight. So roll call vote please.
Garrett.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 28, recommendations for appointments and reappointments following boards and commissions, Board of Appeals, Native American Commission, Planning Commission, and Tax Exempt Review Committee. You have my recommendations. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrett.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. We're gonna go to item 30 since it's a little bit too early for the public hearing. Request for services from the Bishop Land Design for Site and Landscape Design Services and solicitation of a construction manager address through the request of qualification process. Nicole Crutchfield to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and with me tonight, I also have Scott Bishop with BLD, who will be introducing that next level of design. So about a month ago, Scott was in front of you to talk about some design concepts for the plaza, and at that time you authorized him to start the design process. And summarizing the input from the survey and public input, he's done some of that work, and so he's here to present that to you tonight and also start to lead into that discussion on some of the costs that are related to this work, and as it includes the placement of sod buster. So he's here to provide some information to you tonight. We do have two questions for you as you think about next steps and a suggested motion to include hiring Scott to do the technical drawings, the construction drawings, as he talks about Phase 1. Right now, it's just the concept design that he's been authorized to do. It has gone to Finance Committee and is in front of you tonight for that scope of work. And then the step 2 would also be, if you're comfortable with what you hear tonight, going ahead and releasing a request for qualifications for a contractor. So we have a unique construction process that we're proposing as part of this, based on the timelines, and it's called a, basically, construction manager at risk. And it's oversought by the Sentry Code, and it's, the way I explain it to myself and my peers is, it's like a design-build process. So the designer, the community, us as the client, and the contractor work very closely together to basically speed up that process. What it does require, though, is the contractor takes on some risk. And so we're asking tonight to release the requests for qualifications to seek that contractor to be our partner as part of this next phase of construction. So Scott will talk a little bit more about that. I'll be here to answer questions at the end. Maybe as a procedural thing, because Scott has about a 15-minute presentation, jumping back to your public hearing, that is a request for continuation. So we will run past that 5:15 mark as part of Scott's presentation. So I just wanted to let you know that, too.
Our public is just after 5:15, so if we're delayed a bit, that's okay. So Scott can go ahead.
Great to see you all again and great to be back in the city of Fargo. I'm happy to report that it's summer. So thank you for bringing that to me while I'm here. I just wanna give you a brief agenda about how I'm gonna talk about the various things that Nicole mentioned, and one of the things is how we synthesize community input in the design process, and that I'm gonna key you into a little bit. I'm gonna talk about how we've taken those things and we're starting to think about them in the overall plaza design. We're also gonna talk a little bit, these are really mirroring the same things that we've talked to the public about, and then I think really critically, we wanna talk about how we've kind of advanced the ideas of the sod buster landscape. And you can then, I think, talk to me about any questions you might have. I would imagine that you might have a couple. So we've obviously taken this community input, as we talked about last time I was here, as was mentioned about a month ago, and we have on purpose created a series of topics that we can actually translate into physical things. So when we hear from the public, we can then start to think about how we start to integrate some of that work into our own thinking about how we create a unique place, really the heart and soul of Fargo as its civic living room. And one of the first things we started to get a sense of was how that materiality worked. So the fact that people really were interested in seeing water on the site, having cool lighting, stone, wood, and brick. So now we start to think about how that relates to not only those things as inert materials, but actually how they might relate to your history and how those might tie into the plaza itself. So materiality of wood, that was one thing that we mentioned spanning both ecological function of this place as a riparian forest, but also what you can see from the historic images of what was being built and how it was being built. That wood-tress bridge, for example, the actual abutment is even made out of wood. So we actually start to garner ideas about the structure of things that we might put on the plaza based on some historical references, as well as understanding that the place where the plaza is going to go is actually where a lot of the fire, the remains of the fire of the city were placed. So there's kind of a historic and meaningful tie to the actual material of wood, and in the same way there is with stone. Stone, there is no stone in Fargo, right? It's all clay. But what we do understand is that the reason why there are stone buildings here is that they're actually related to how the rail came to Fargo, and the best way to transport stone was actually that railway. So we can look at the historic context, and I think back when I interviewed for the planning work, I said to some of you how beautiful your city was because of the character of your buildings and they had a certain unique quality to them. One of those things is stone, and we can see how that related directly to the rail, and that's important historically. So not only are we calling out the material that the people were interested in, but we can start to build the palette of material, which is really critical. We might go and show you other images as we further develop this. In that same way, we can look at brick and how that was imported, both from Hebron and actually closer on. So the redder brick comes from a little bit further away, and when you think about the yellow brick, that material in essence comes from a local, from the local clays. And that material is, again, reflected in the stock of this place. So we see how materiality actually ties to what people understand about Fargo and how that relates to, in essence, the ground of which it has come from. So when we start to think about the placement of this material in the plaza, we need to make sure the performance criteria works out properly, and that relates to, again, how these bricks are made. A building brick is different than a brick that you put on the ground, right? And that means that we call that a vitrified brick, and that makes it harder and it makes it impenetrable to water. We also know that because of the unique building conditions, that if we are going to use some of these materials, there's going to be special ways that we deal with it. So in essence, we are starting to build an idea about what the character of the landscape materials will be on the plaza and how we might implement them. We can back up and then talk about how that fits into these larger frameworks like geology, but also understanding that the ground itself here has a unique quality because it is all clay, that there's a certain set of parameters that this follows, and we might call this organizational. This is how ecology happens, is how the ground moves beneath you, and that creates a unique type and set of conditions that yield a type of living ecology. So this research helps us understand how we might start to organize the space and how we might grow the functional ecology in that place that relates not only to what was here in the past, but also what's here today. So this work, in essence, I go and I look for examples of these things when I go and run around Fargo. Some of you may see me do that in the morning. I don't know why that happened. Okay. And so this idea of ecology, I think, I was running along the trails and I saw this kind of drying condition of the mud and silt. And this actually is a great example of an organizational system, right? An organizational system relates to, scalearily, to how, right, the soils move. So this is how the clays actually work at a multitude of scales, but it also tells us about a variety of scales that things can function on. So an organizational system is then kind of the framework by which we might start to make decisions about form for the plaza, okay? So I've talked about what the materials we might start using, and now I'm talking about how the form might work and how that form actually creates a series of functional ecologies that we can tap into a variety of scales. And so we take that and we say, all right, well, we have material, we have some sort of formal logic, and now what we wanna do is get all of the stuff that people want. And we've talked to people about that, right? That's the program and the amenities that people are looking at. And we try to get a better understanding about how these scale. So we start to look at these from small to medium to large to extra-large. So a small, right, type of program, right, might be local artists and performances where a game day in the public market might start to look at higher and higher levels of people. And then you might look at that extra-large scale, and if you guys recall, last time we discussed, like, what is the scale of the plaza? And I want you to keep in mind that we understand that we can hold an event where 50,000 people can come, right, to this place. So we need to make sure that we're planning for that in the design, and so that means that has an impact on both the types of programs that we want there, but also, right, the amenities, because you don't wanna have a swing set in the way of your rally, right? So this is about a planning process that we go through, and we try to sort these things by small, medium, and large to get that understanding. The thing about program is we can anticipate hundreds, if not thousands, of programs that could occur on this plaza, but we have to remember that there's an equal amount that we could have never anticipated. So plazas are about flexibility, but we test them with all of these various programs, and in essence, these programs can be both emergent, right? It can happen naturally from day to day, or they can be part of programmed events. You need to make sure that you have kind of the amenities to support some of these, but some of them, again, are more emergent in those conditions. And I wanna be clear, if you look at this image, you can see that there's both, right, there's both hardscape and softscape things here, right? Some things are better occurring on a hardscape, some things are better occurring on a softscape. So we can start to understand in which way these things might have a surface or material quality to themselves. And we can start to think about how even the extra-large events, right, those ones from 20,000 to 50,000 people, that the carnivals, the Fourth of July celebrations, right, these are all going to be able to be accommodated in this space. This is where these things should occur. That's what we're trying to design this space for. And so in that same way, we need to think about amenities. And amenities are different from program in that they're actually a thing, right? They're like a restroom. They could be a screen. They could be a stage. These are things that we need to build in to make sure that we can host certain types of programs. Civic pavilions, kayak rental shacks, right, spray decks, water fountains, and all of those we're starting to analyze now. You're not gonna necessarily get everything, and there may actually be a shopping list and a dollar amount that helps us to establish what these are. But we do wanna make sure that we're thinking about each one of these as we start to put them into a formal logic, this kind of framework. So you can see how we've built these up and how, in essence, the more, this actually exceeds the amount of input that we receive from the public because we also have ideas as designers, but again, you guys may also have ideas that you might think about. So we wanna make sure that we're including everybody's input in this stage. So what people want is then, you know, as we say, we're translating that into a physical and formal logic on the site at this point. And so that is really, in essence, speaking to, I think on that last slide, there were a few different landscape types, and this is where I want you guys to really focus because when we talk about hardscape and softscape, there's actually a dollar amount that goes with that. The cool thing is, is that everybody kind of said, we want both. We want a certain amount of hardscape and a certain amount of softscape, and that, I think, is great because it allows us some flexibility to deal with costs, and I'll show you what impact that has. And we need to have some hardscape for certain types of programming, as I've just shown you, but we do want this to be a green space for people to rest and relax as well. It's actually a pretty big space. It's nearly 300,000 square feet, so that allows us to have everything we want, honestly, in terms of this kind of hardscape and softscape. But when we think about numbers, that 300,000 square feet approximately, that does have an impact, and I'm gonna just, I'm gonna walk you through what we would say is a costing exercise so that you guys understand why things cost what they do. This doesn't reflect the design. It actually just reflects a square foot dollar amount assigned to that square footage so that you guys start to understand what we're engaging in in terms of cost. So if we went and we decided that we wanted the entire space that we're looking at in our study area to just be lawn, right, nothing special, not a reinforced turf like Washington, DC, but just a lawn, put some sod down, level it off, this plaza without any amenities would be $3 million, right? That's not something I control. That's what the market controls. But again, that's not what we're looking at. We need to have program. You could go and make it all a parking lot without curb and gutter, just with asphalt, also not super desirable. This would cost you about $4 million. So we can also start to look at, now, some people said they were interested in lawn. No one said they were interested in all asphalt, and no one said they were interested in all concrete, but that would also cost you $5 million. And so you can see as we kind of escalate the material quality, you see the escalation in cost. So now if we say, well, what about doing it all in stone, because that was one of the materials that people were really interested in using, that's gonna cost $33 million. There's no amenities included in this, right? This is just a takeoff of area versus square foot cost and understanding some of the fill requirements on the site. So going all the way back to that first slide, the good news is, is that nobody wants it to all be hardscape, and we should actually celebrate that from a cost standpoint because it would be a little bit tough to do. Now, this actually relates directly to what we assume the cost of sod buster to be at this point. So the reason why that is, is we haven't finished a design, and because of the timeline, it's gonna be very difficult for us to get costs in and implement a small piece of this project. So area 1 really is what we're calling Phase 1, and that is, right, it's the work that we think needs to be done to implement sod buster, as well as the landscape that's required to be associated with it. And so this is another slide that represents those requirements that we've talked about previously, and an estimate that we've done in a similar way based upon those project requirements that give us this number of 1 million to 1.5 million. That includes the design, plant selection, irrigation, security lighting, signage, right? These all play a role in what is that initial estimate. And so, again, this is 1/12 of the plaza in scale. So I hope at looking at those other numbers, you can start to understand why this cost would land at where it is. So let me dig in a little bit to those requirements and some of our thoughts right now about what we think that's going to be, because we're asking you to let us continue that design so that we can actually put sod buster there in time. So one of the things that we have to do, which is a little bit tricky, is to, at the same time we're doing the concept design for the entire plaza, figure out how that work is going to feather in to the final design, right, of the plaza itself. We know that we have a lot of grade differentials. You can look at this, 896, and then look at City Hall, 907, right? That's nine feet of grade difference that we have to somehow accommodate in our design and make a plaza and integrate sod buster into. So what we found is that we can create a path in and around to the library itself and actually tie into their current ADA ramp as a way to kind of cauterize this work, and that satisfies the ADA requirement of this design. We can also tie into some of the higher levels of the plaza later on and, again, satisfy the program of sod buster. And that is, not only integrates what is required to satisfy the grant, but it also, as we're doing this, it starts to integrate some of those things that we've already discussed. So trying to implement this riparian forest gradient from prairie, right, to forest. There are some requirements during our stakeholder meetings, the library, that they have asked for programmatically, like a library café terrace and a library event salon that we're integrating. The prairie landscape is key and critical to the implementation of sod buster. That's being implemented in this, as well as seating and viewing platforms that allow people to look at the sculpture and contemplate. And then as you kind of move north of the yellow path programmatically, we really get into figuring out, right, how we actually feather that grade to what we believe to be the final condition of the plaza. And that, in essence, allows us to create these things, interim tree nurseries, where we can actually buy plant material that's smaller and start to grow that material while we're working on the rest of the plaza, which has a more extended timeframe, thankfully. And so all of these things, we then take the program, just like we have, and we start to apply some of that logic in terms of how we frame this. And that logic, and you can actually start to see that emerging in this particular diagram, right, of the crackle, right, the idea that we start to look at inherent qualities of this place, and they start to emerge as a design theme. And so, in essence, our goal is to move this from a concept and actually an implementation in a very quick timeframe. But again, we think that we've covered some of the primary needs, and we hope that we won't have to change any of this from the south of that trail on down. I just wanted to point out one last thing. Programmatically is that we still have space within some of these spaces. You can see in the interim tree nursery on the east side that we've actually included areas for temporary art installations. So this does start to function actually as a quality open space, and it starts to reflect the quality of the work that we wanna see for the rest of the plaza. So even though this is about sod buster, in essence, you know, the need for implementation is about sod buster, the opportunity that we have is really about thinking about how we implement a concept that will apply to the plaza writ large. So this is not only just a concept, in essence, what we wanna make sure is that we're showing the quality of work, that this is really the first phase of the plaza, right? And what we're doing here should reflect the work that goes on and continues on for the rest of the area. So I'm gonna ask if you guys have any questions. We can certainly talk about timeline, which, again, is key and critical. So here we are, we're kind of at that next step in terms of asking that the technical documentation be authorized. We need to get the CM information out very quickly so that we can get responses from those CMs and then start to work with that CM to both garner costs and review complexity of site conditions. We have some investigation work underway, and that will tie into that particular work that we are doing. So at that point, I will say thank you for your time, but I would also ask if you guys have any questions or would like me to move back forward.
Mr. Pepcorn?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. So Scott, I have a couple of questions. So you were talking about this, so the sod buster section, you'll have that first, and then will it be? then will, will it be, as time goes by, we can do different phases? Is that, is that what you see in the future? How, how will that work?
I can tell you as much as I can see the future, which I think the, I think that there's an opportunity to do that. I think what you will find is that, you know, in the work that we presented in terms of the area planning, like Second Avenue and Fourth, that there's some other, there's other opportunities that tie in much, in much larger in terms of the context. And we're, we are trying to make sure that those things work, but they don't all have to, I think some of, we need to continue to design and plan that work, but the actual implementation after a certain point might, might break up depending on how we think about funding. But that also might tie together. So I guess my answer is it's flexible enough to work in either way. And I think what we'll see is there will be something that will tell us whether or not that's an economic flag or that's a budgetary flag that will tell us how we might make those next steps. Please understand that the concept for the plaza, right, helps us establish the visual characteristics. The next phase of schematic design helps us establish the cost, the cost, a real budget. So you might get levels of cost similar to what I've talked about today that are more specific to amenities and areas. But again, what we're trying to do is outline the look and the feel so that we can, we can move it forward with, with robust momentum.
Just one quick comment, the plaza in front of the library, I think that's really, that's a great idea. I, I think that will be very popular and then with seating and things like that, I think that's, that is a great addition. So, thank you.
Mr. Girk.
Do you want to go back two or three slides just to give an overview of?
Yeah, that's good.
So my questions kind of revolve around the southeast corner of the plaza here. I don't think we've all decided exactly what we want to see there yet, obviously, but I'm wondering if this project here would preclude anything to the southeast there? Does this, would this mandate that what the other portion would look like or is this totally separate and it can be where we want it to be still?
Do you mean like what we used to call the, one of the development areas in the parking lot?
Right, the parking lots.
This doesn't influence that at all. And I will actually, and part of my work that you've already funded me for in the concept design will show both that site as a development area and that site as an open space. So that's, that will be one question that I come back to you guys with actually, is where you want to see that go.
Very glad to hear that. So when you say development area, are you talking private investment?
Yeah, I mean, we are open. It seems to me that based upon our current discussions at the Performing Arts Center is going where the Civic is, so that would, that would mean that that's open to other opportunities.
Yeah, and that's really what I was looking for. And I'm glad that we're going in that direction. You know, I, I see that as a fantastic opportunity for a business to be located there that would then, you know, fit in with what we're trying to do here as well. That would make it so we don't have to invest all those dollars. It'd be a private investment and they make money, we don't have to spend money. And if it, if it's value added to what we actually are doing ourselves, then that's, that's the direction I really want to see. So are we planning on doing requests for proposals? Are, are you reaching out to the private sector already?
I think once you guys, once you guys decide on, I mean, maybe you don't have to decide, but once you guys see what it looks like, that I would hope to get some direction from you all. I have been talking to, to private developers and that has actually been, that was been in the planning phase and that was just to understand kind of what everybody's doing. I would, I would not ever proceed to sell a portion of the city, city's property without permission or engage in such activities. So I think what, what you guys know, the public knows about what we've been thinking about that area. So that may, that may stir some interest for that. But I think our next steps would be for you guys to actually give us some direction on where you might want to go with that.
So you're going to offer examples then? I mean, for us, you know, I'm not a designer. I can't visualize like you can. Would you give us ideas of what the private sector might be interested in doing?
I think we can show you where that building footprint would best be located and most likely be located for private development. Yep.
Fantastic, thank you.
Any other commissioners' questions? Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just curious, maybe Bruce or, or maybe, so we could just, how, how are we budgeting this? This is mid-cycle this year. I'm assuming that, just so I'm clear on, on the budgeting, financing aspect of this.
I'll take a stab at it and then defer to Michael or Kent for more, but basically in coordination with administration and finance, we've set aside a capital project line item and as we look at the renewal plan and other components that might help offset some of those costs as a future discussion, but right now we have that line item set aside.
We have the suggested motion. Do you have it in there, please? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Mahoney?
Aye. We'll go to public hearing now. Continued from 7/119 zoning change to repeal and reestablish condition all the timber, Timber Parkway Third Edition, denial recommended by Planning Commission on 5/719, continued from the 6/319 regular meeting, first reading of the rezoning ordinance. I don't, Nicole, who's going to give this?
You two.
Or, I'm sorry, it's continued.
Yeah, we're not scheduled to do a presentation, but I'll be here to answer any questions if you'd like.
Questions? There are motion?
A motion, continue it to 7/1.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Gary?
Yes.
Grinberg?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Aye. Item 26, selection of alternative B option, alternative B1 for option B for the design of 64th Avenue South, Grubman District, PN 19A1. Jeremy Gordon to explain.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Good to see you guys again. Talk about 64th Avenue. Third times in China, hopefully. So I, this comes to you from our Public Works Committee and looking for some, looking for a direction and a motion tonight so we can move this project along. So I got a slideshow, pared down slideshow from what you've seen previously and I can answer any questions you may have. So just to beef, the brief project background, we began studying this area, South Fargo, on 25th Street and 64th in 2007. The work at that time, the roadwork really went south on 25th Street, tackled 70th, 73rd, 76th avenues. We began thinking about 64th Avenue in 2014, requested federal aid in the fall of 14. DOT worked it in their program, programmed it for use for this year, actually, 10 million. And knowing that, we lined up an RFP for Engineering Services in 2015, hired KLJ in October of 2015. And as things happened and that, how, how things developed and how things get changed, we swapped this project for 52nd Avenue's funding. So 52nd Avenue could go first and 64th could wait. And with a decision tonight, the environmental document for this project will be, you'll have made your decision, it'll be submitted to DOT and Federal Highway for final approval. So this is, this project comes right out of the long range plan. So this is a, really a slide from 2014, long range plan then. You can note all the projects that are on here that we've been plugging away on. It's always good to have a roadmap to the future. So this is on there. And then these projects highlighted are federal aid projects that are local projects using federal aid in some way, shape or form. Last year, last year's color is green, this year's purple, red is next year, yellow is the year after that, and 2022 is the, the last year out. So this year, this project that we're talking about would be constructed over two years. So really, just getting to the project itself, it's actually a pretty straightforward design. Based on it just being overpass, a three lane road will be able to handle the anticipated traffic capacity. So really the difference between the alternatives is what kind of bike facility do we want? So the first one is pretty much our typical roadway, three lanes with a path on one side, sidewalk on the other. The second one is three lanes with on-street bike lanes with a path and a sidewalk. And the last one is a new design called the cycle track. It'd be a basic three lane road with a cycle track. It's basically a bonus path. So really, the only difference between a cycle track and a shared use path is at the intersections where they cross the street. The bikes would be given more priority as they go through the intersection. The, the vehicles would have to respect them as more of a vehicle than a recreational So that, the, the three that, that we've narrowed it down to, they all have construction cost estimates. The first one's 27.2, the next one is 29.1, and the last one is roughly 30 million. And really, that's the most expensive because you have to build the most amount of bridge for that. So other project details, we'll have two pedestrian underpasses, one at Drain 53 where you continue, continue north and south along the drain. And then the other one will be west of the, of I-29, most likely in the embankment of the overpass. So the Sanford Park area, just west of the highway, would have a great separated crossing to get into that area. The bridge will, we use four spans instead of our normal two spans and we'll use a lightweight fill or the geofone block that's very light and easily placed. And then the last one is the bridge is being designed to accommodate a future interchange so that if and when that does occur, minimal structural rework will have to be done. So here's just a picture of the bridge. The top one is actually what KLJ has put together. And the bottom picture is 42nd Street. So you can get, kind of get a feel for how long it'll be. Our bridge will be 100 feet shorter than 42nd Street, but it'll be pretty close to how that's going to look. So the funding is basically a third, 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 10 million federal, 10 to 12 million special assessments, and then the rest would be sales tax funds. And then really, your decisions tonight would be, question one, do you want to move forward with this project, yes or no? And then two, what option would you like to move forward with? So Public Works made the recommendation for the two check marks on there. Yes, we should move forward and the design should be alternative B1 with option B being the four span bridge with a cost estimate of 27.2 million. And then at the same time, instead of using a sidewalk on the south side, both path, both sidewalks should be 10-foot paths throughout.
Similar to 40th Avenue?
Yes. That has sidewalks kind of for some blocks, but yes. So the next steps are complete the final design, we're going to request an April bid opening by DOT, bid the project in April, get, get contracts solidified, begin work in May, work on the east side in the embankment, and then finish in the year after with the structural bridge work and then the west side pavement. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Mr. Girk.
Can you go back to the slide that has the three all together? Why didn't he cover what we talked about?
All three on there?
Yeah. I just want to be clear what I'm, what I'm looking at.
Yep.
So the top one is what you're talking about, is the recommendation?
Yes.
And what's the, what's the option? What's the difference?
Oh, so both path, both sidewalks would be 10 feet wide. So path on a path.
Mr. Grinberg. And Jeremy, can you go to your next step slide?
We had, we talked earlier before the meeting and we had a meeting with the mayor. Can you kind of describe what would also be a next step from an alternate standpoint in our process that we discussed with interchange? Because I was really, that should have been in this next step slide.
Yeah, I, I apologize, they're kind of two different things. But, so what'll happen is in October, MetroCog will, will send out grant applications for us to fill out for identifying what projects we want to build in the future. And future interchange, we will fill that out and run the numbers on the cost for that and that'll be part of one of our projects' grant applications. So it's, that, that comes in the fall and they get, those stand on their own in the fall and in the spring with both MetroCog and DOT. So I, I heard you, it is just completely separate from this project.
I don't, I don't necessarily view it that way. I view it as, you know, a plan.
Yep.
So it should be included. So I'd like the slide deck updated with that reference.
For future.
Yeah.
So there'd be a number five. Mr. Pepcorn?
So Mr. Chair, we've had a couple of, I've seen a couple of letters with the editor and some comments from people that are concerned about sprawl, but part of our job is to prepare for the future. This is for 30 and 50 years from now and to have the corridor both here and at 76th, you have to have that prepared. If you, if we wanted to try to go back after the growth starts and then put in a corridor, it would cost a fortune. And so that's part of our job. Whether we support growth or whatever, it's like part of our job is to prepare and to have these arterials in place far ahead of the growth. That, that's part of our job. So I, I, you know, there's people, they can have their opinions, but this is, this is part of our job. Thanks.
I think sort of to that point too is for public safety, you know, I'm not going to put words in the fire department's mouth, but you know, that there is going to be a fire station down there at some point and they're going to have to go either around to Wal-Mart and come back down or they're going to go across the interstate. So it is an important development here that we're, that we're doing. And while it might not be as utilized as it will be in the future, it's definitely important for, for a lot of different reasons.
Jeremy, just for the public, rehab specials that we have, this does not rob from any of that. The rehab specials and the CIP that you guys have as engineers is a different budget entirely. This is a budget that is set up for infrastructure needs.
Well, it, the good thing is this is a two-year project. So the 10 million that would be estimated as sales tax, it'd basically be 5 million a year. So that we do have at least 5 million for in-town water main replacement projects as well. So this is just a mix. So you, you got to balance, new, existing, unplanned. So this, this is, this is pretty much typical of how we've rolled the last couple decades. And I will, I, if I could add, you know, I, what I didn't put in the presentation is, you know, Fargo, this area has a lot of barriers, just either natural or man-made barriers that make transportation kind of difficult in town, whether it's the river or the drain system or the railroad or the highways. Getting around town is, we've made a lot of obstacles for ourselves. So this being a section line road, you know, this is basically the part of the mesh that is the backbone of our transportation system. So, you know, it does seem like we are on the edge of town here, but the 10 million in federal aid to, to help with that bridge is very important. And if we only make it to 38th Street or 45th Street for a connection, so be it, but the 10 million for that bridge is very, very important.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeremy, I'm just curious, not all of us are as, as experienced as, as you and others at, at this process. And folks listening in maybe catch this moment in time, but if we could just back up a little bit and get up into a balcony, help us understand how do we determine who decides, what are the criteria for discerning and deciding when to do an interchange? And, and how far out do we look? Because you got 40th, 52nd, 64th, 70th. I just want to see the bigger picture if I could for a moment and know how this fits in.
Yeah, the, the, the planning, our long range planning, we have had, DOT would like us to do interchanges every two miles. That's not to say we can't do them every mile. But these projects are expensive and you really have to have a roadmap, you know, year by year by year as to where you're going to put the money. So this project, it's expensive and you really got to start somewhere and you can always add on to it and take on to it later. But like I said in that long range plan, the roadmap to the future, you know, this kind of show, this shows where the needs are as time progresses. So, you know, we did swap funding for 64th and 52nd because there were, there were more pressing needs on that street. But from a, from a zoomed out, from a zoomed out 30,000-foot elevation, this is really the projects that we should really be looking at in the future.
But I think what Mr. Strand's asking, Mr. Grinberg's question, is if we made that an interchange, we have to go all the way up to the federal level to do that. I think when we visited about this, you stated that from the balcony, it may take one or two years to even entertain the interchange if we so desired to do that. And wasn't it only we had to get permission from the feds to do it? So it's not, not a sure thing that we'll ever have an interchange there, but yes, they have to go all the way back because the two-year rule is there right now. And if we want it shorter than that, that has to be a discussion that can take well up 18 months, so.
Well, just, if I may, just to add to that, you know, since the brown bag we had on this topic, I had a few conversations with state DOT and just educating myself up to a matter-of-fact approach to things versus, you know, our practical ways of doing things here at the city. And what I learned is that decision process was elevated to a higher level for And what I learned is that decision process was elevated to a higher level for the Ninth Street overpass in West Fargo. And the funding wasn't there, but the state committed to build the overpass. The city of West Fargo committed to fund to build the interchange. And then the state and through the feds, West Fargo was reimbursed. So there is a way to, whether it's the necessity and the interstate justification, to work beyond local and state to the federal and warranting a decision that, from my perspective, that's the growth area. Ninth Street built out in Veterans Boulevard because it was high ground in the last ten or fifteen years. And look what happened. And interchange, you can certainly justify that they made the right decisions to accelerate that. We're going to experience the same thing, what's going to happen in Sixty-Fourth and Fifty-Second as we grow and that area becomes more dense. So the point that I'm just trying to make sure we're, look at Twenty-Fifth Street. We added an interchange years later. If we can use an option and look this down the road two or three years and capture this because of what's pending, it just seems to be prudent from the taxpayers' perspective to do it now versus assume we're going to do it ten or fifteen years from now. Because it's going to happen, in my opinion.
Mr. Strand, did that answer your question?
Well, if I could go a little further, we've been asked, how do we justify economically a decision like this? What are the economic impacts of this funding of mechanism in this process? And I don't know how to answer that. I know you're an engineer and that's your, you know, but how do we answer that question of, we have growth and then we have federal funding that we may not have if we don't act on this now? I'm just trying to get my arms around that issue of this, is this, are there concerns about this being cost-effective? Or where would those concerns come from? Or I don't, and yet I've, we've been asked this and I don't know the answer.
This is, I mean, from a rural perspective, this is pretty much how we've been doing business. But there may be a bigger question of what is the cost of expanding the footprint of the city? And engineering has not done that. And I don't even know if the city as a whole has ever done that. But I think that's the bigger question that's being asked right now.
Part of the guess you have to guess, Jeremy, is how fast is there going to fill in? Area Ron Davies is taking ten years and that's filling in. So the question is, is this new section going to start to fill in? If you look east-west, it looks like that's the next section that will fill. The interest we have with people around the community of that section, it sounds like it's going to fill in probably faster than we think. But if the city continues a growth of two percent a year, we continue to grow. If we flatten out, then a lot of it will slow down. But I think Commissioner Gerg makes a very good point. We have to have east-west. And one of the costs you don't talk about, if the chief can't get to a house quick enough, his fire insurance rates go up. So he has to prove he can get to a house in a certain amount of time. Or your rate goes from one level to another level. So that's part of what influences when we put infrastructure in, what we need to do to protect the whole city.
Yeah, like I said, we've got enough barriers. A section line road should be pretty straightforward to get approved and built. That's my take. I've been telling staff, I don't think we've ever had to apologize for building a section line road to current design standards.
Any other questions? Have a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Approved and second. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gerg.
Yes.
Pepcorn. Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
If I may, Commissioner Grinberg, we'll for sure remember this when the applications come through in MetroCog in the fall. Your comments are not forgotten.
That'd be great. But I, you know, from a standpoint of my file, I'd like an updated slide deck with those steps we discussed in there as future.
Okay.
Thank you.
This weekend, there was a editorial about City of Fargo and just wanted to make some points. Today, we're talking about that. Downtown Fargo is a vibrant core of our community and a regional epicenter for arts, entertainment, commerce. The safety of our residents and visitors in every area of our city, including downtown Fargo, is the highest priority of this city commission. All my commissioners would feel the same on this issue. We have seen instances of tragic crimes in our community recently, which, while rare, are jolting our close-knit metro. I can hardly reiterate to everybody that Fargo is safe for people of all ages and walks of life. I'm proud of the diligent work that the Fargo Police Department, which plays a vital role by incorporating community-centric, intelligent policing strategies. Acts of random violence are rare in Fargo, even when considering our growth into a true metropolitan area. Many times when a violent crime is committed, it has been discovered that the parties knew each other and the crimes were not random. The city is committed to ensuring safety of all residents and visitors in downtown Fargo by fostering a spirit of cooperation, partnership, and vigilance between all parties. I have visited many downtowns across America. I have seen deterioration of the cores of those cities. We will not let those things happen to our community. Our expectations and standards do not allow it. The City Fargo's main mission is to protect and serve its residents. The Fargo Police Department is devoted to protecting and serving Fargo. Chief Dave Todd and the Fargo Police Department are committed to a safe community and has increased officer presence in the downtown area. And foot patrols will also be increased in the downtown area. People-to-people contact, building relationships, and deterring poor behavior will be the core of those officers in their duty. Chief Todd, can you speak to this issue?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thanks for giving me the opportunity. The Fargo Police Department continues to actively investigate the homicide that occurred at Sixth Avenue and Fourth Street of Jay Halverson that occurred on June seventh. And within the day, we were able to arrest two individuals we feel are responsible for that crime and are connected to that case. And we don't believe there's anybody else that we need to be looking for at this time. It appears as though it was a negative verbal interaction between Mr. Halverson and the two suspects prior to the shooting taking place. It doesn't appear that it's related to the business. It doesn't appear that it's related to the downtown area. It's just where that particular act happened. We have multiple detectives continuing to follow up on this case and continuing to build it. As the mayor said, we are incorporating more foot patrols in the downtown area because I think that person-to-person contact and that visibility is important. I have in the audience Lieutenant George Vincent, who is the present lieutenant for the downtown district. And I also have the past lieutenant, Chris Helmick, here in the audience. And they've helped me throughout these last years in our policing our downtown area. We've also been using a JAG grant for putting extra officers out on the street during bar closing in the downtown area. We have run a couple of panhandling stings and we have some more scheduled here in the near future. We have our downtown resource officer program that has also come up with a work program for offenders so that they can work off their fines and not have them result in warrants. And then through that programming can then get them into services, whether it be for alcoholism, addiction, or mental health issues, and then work them towards getting into housing. We're involved in the safety community and we work extensively with the DCP for programming of safer events in the downtown area. We also am on the liquor control board with a couple of your commissioners there. And we try to address issues as we see them come up with license holders and try to hold them accountable. There's always more that we can do in that area and we'll certainly seek on how we can do that. But one of the things that I will say that is when we do work with liquor license holders, as both my lieutenants have, we try to do that in partnership with them to get their staff to help us address that issue and solve those problems.
Thank you, Chief. The downtown community partnership and business improvement districts are leaders as well. They're a tremendous partner to the City of Fargo. And they have formed a downtown safety committee with representation from every block on Broadway from Main to Sixth Avenue North. At least one representative from each of the outlying zones. This also includes the Fargo Police, the FM Homeless Coalition, NDSU Student Body President, and downtown residents. The committee is actively working to keep downtown Fargo safe. And I'll have Melissa Radamacher speak to this issue.
Hi, thank you.
And our bid guy.
Yes, we have Chris Schlepp here as well. He's operations manager for the Business Improvement District. I've invited him because the collaboration, the partnership is so vital between the bid, the DCP, as well as the police department that Chief Todd mentioned. We fully support the additional efforts that are taking place in the city. The communication and efforts that are happening are phenomenal. The DCP currently has a safety committee that we're very active in. It consists about twelve to fifteen members, varies from the Fargo Police to the bid, DCP residents, mobile detox, variety of residents and businesses. So it is definitely top of mind. It's something that, like you said, the cooperation of, the spirit of cooperation, partnerships, and vigilance between all parties is so vital to make sure that we are having a safe community in the heart of our city is downtown.
From the bid perspective, and I agree with Melissa, we work hand-in-hand together with the police department, with mobile outreach, with community leaders to make sure downtown Fargo remains safe. And from our perspective, from a bid perspective, it is safe. We do have a safety ambassador that works from Thursday through Saturday evenings until 10:00 PM, both mobile and walking around downtown Fargo. And we're there to observe and report, serves as another set of eyes for the community and for the police department. And when we say, when we see something, we say something and we report it. And the relationship is very positive with the police department and with the community residents. And we appreciate it. And from our perspective, again, downtown Fargo is safe.
Thank you, both of you.
Liquor licenses are a right, not a privilege. We talked about that in the paper as well. The Fargo Liquor Control Board is tasked not only with issuing new licenses, but also with ensuring current liquor license holders meet the requirements to retain their license. There have been a handful of businesses which consume a large amount of time and effort on law enforcement. And I'll be suggesting to the Liquor Control Board, schedule public meetings with these license holders to formulate a plan of action for improvement. If there's some things that can be done, and I reached out to Commissioner Pepcorn, and we will be meeting with some of the owners to talk about what can we do to make it better. Successful improvements in the city are not, successful improvements are not seen in the bars or off-sales area. The city has a right to suspend and then potentially revoke liquor licenses. All options will be on the table and I should, the Liquor Board, to address those issues. The City of Fargo also needs partners in establishing excellent neighborhoods and maintaining those neighborhoods. Just like every venture, the City of Fargo needs partners to help achieve its goals. We are asking residents to help in their neighborhood, in their community. We offer programs such as the Neighborhood Revitalization Initiative to rehabilitate homes. This has allowed us to invest millions of dollars into improving neighborhoods. We're always looking for more community partners in this venture, but due to low interest rates offered by the private lending sector, we did not expend all the funds in the loan pool at this time. Mr. Strand of the Community Development has funds available. The problem is the interest rates are close, so some people have not taken advantage of that. In the times in which the interest rate was at two percent and the loans from the bank were four or five percent, you'd be tempted to do a home improvement at two percent. Right now, the interest rates are very close, so we're happy to look at any other aspects of neighborhood improvement. And Community Development has been tasked to do that. And we will work at other ways to help improve the neighborhoods. Your city commissioner and city staff are here to help you. And if there's any way in the neighborhood you come up with ideas, please approach them and they will work on that. The Kilburn Group also has been working diligently with the neighbors to redevelop SARS sudden service property. This fall, they will take down SARS public sudden service property and demolish that site to make ready for a future development. They have tried to work in the neighborhood, had twenty public community events that were held in this property over the several months. And they're trying to make the neighborhood a livable, walkable area. They hope to move forward eventually with a neighborhood-centric alternative in its place. And I think they'll work with our planning department to come up with what might go in that space. City of Fargo Commission has recently implemented recommendations of public safety salary analysis to ensure the Fargo Police and the Fargo Fire employees are compensated properly to the level of work we expect of them. We are losing our public safety employees to other communities as well as to the private sector. We, as a commission, took action to ensure we can retain and attract the best candidates. In addition to streamlining our police operations with the unified new Fargo Police Headquarters, we are committed to maintaining a storefront presence of the Fargo PD in downtown Fargo. We anticipate having an office in the downtown area so people can have it easily accessed and come to them as needed. It is critically important that the City of Fargo's police force is seen and present at that place. And lastly, we were asked the question, what does the city, or what does the community want? Around this time of year, we're working, our department has to assemble a budget. We hear comments from some of the need to lower property taxes. Well, this is always a good goal to have. I think it's an opportunity to put things into perspective when it comes to mill levies in Fargo. The city, through its Home Rule Charter, has the ability to tax up to sixty-four mills. We currently are at fifty-one mills. In the past seven years, we have reduced the mill levy by seven-point-two-five mills. And this is limiting the impact of our ability to hire additional city employees to serve a growing city. As we grow, we have to look forward. One mill in the City of Fargo right now in revenue is five-hundred-and-sixty-two thousand dollars. If we reduce our tax level by one mill and you own a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home, you'd see a property tax reduction of ten dollars and sixty-nine cents. But for example, if we were able to raise it by one mill, this revenue could fund seven additional police officers. These are significant facts that the residents have to consider when we have this community conversations about how to protect our residents. So when looking at the budget, contact your commissioners, tell them what your feelings are. Do we have enough police officers on the street? Do we need to put more foot patrol out there? Do we need to do other things in the community to make you feel safe? It costs money to do any of those things and the commission has stood firm behind safety in the city. And we will continue to stand firm behind that as well. We will do what is necessary to keep the city safe. So if there's any further discussion the commissions want, that's kind of our answer to the question. I think city leadership is very well tuned and we want safety in this community. Commissioner.
Mayor, I join you in this messaging, but on a more personal note, many of us had quite a bit of work with Jay Halverson. And we've just, for example, launching the downtown food truck program. He was the point of that process with our city. You know, so his fingerprints and his influence and his passion and his heart are so much reflected in our food truck program. I can't begin to tell you how many texts and messages I got from him right up till three days before he was killed, thanking us as a commission for standing behind this vision and for standing behind it unanimously. So I know our community is just heartbroken over this tragedy. And I know we do our best to be a safe city. And I think it's horribly unfortunate that we've become such a gun culture. But those are other things for us to address too going forward.
Mr. Grinberg. Just a comment, appreciate the presentation and your remarks tonight. I think they were spot on. Recently, I had visited with a couple of law enforcement officers after lunch on Broadway and just having a discussion how things are going and to this issue of safety. And I brought up the place of last drink discussion that's been taking place with leadership in downtown. And we had a discussion about that. But the comment was made, and this is my encouragement to the Liquor Control Board, it might make, have more impact if you restrict off-sale at ten or ten-thirty at night versus, you know, later in the evening. Because that's where we really see the problems with the massive quantities of alcohol bought in off-sale in downtown after some point in time. And I just thought that was an interesting observation about, we talk about alcohol. And I just thought it was an interesting thing that I'd suggest to take a look at.
Thank you. The other issue we had tonight is opioid litigation. And Eric Johnson's going to update us on.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And Commissioners, I handed out just before the meeting started in anticipation of this, a little memo that highlights my comments here. The mayor asked me this morning to put together a little bit of a report. For the last couple of years now, there've been, I think they're saying hundreds of lawsuits filed against opioid manufacturers and distributors throughout the country, some brought by cities, some by counties, and some by states. There has, in the last year, a little bit more than a year, federal courts, particularly out of the Northern District of Ohio, have sort of set up what's called a multi-district litigation arrangement in which a federal judge, this case Judge Dan Pollster, oversees all of the litigation, has certain authority to schedule things and handle discovery issues and so forth. And so that becomes sort of a hub for all the activity related to the opioid litigation. Included in that is sort of a schedule of first-tier cases. And the Oklahoma litigation that just has been in the news the last month or so was one of those early bellwether cases. That trial just started at the very end of May. And settlement occurred initially with Purdue Pharma, which is sort of the main target defendant, you could say, in the amount of two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars. And then subsequently, another pharmaceutical company, Teva Pharmaceutical, settled for eighty-five million. And so that was, you know, an interesting development in terms of the Uh, and so that was, you know, an interesting development in terms of the size of, uh, the claims that can be made and what settlements might occur. Of course, there'd been talk about Purdue, uh, filing for bankruptcy as well, so that certainly impacts those kind of settlements. Then, just in the last month, uh, the state of North Dakota, which had started a lawsuit, um, a year ago in May, in May of two thousand and eighteen, uh, naming Purdue Pharma as a named defendant, but also sort of having placeholders in the form of Jane Doe or Joe Doe defendants, uh, was filed, uh, and, uh, based on motion from the pharmaceutical companies, uh, the Burley County District Court issued an order dismissing the case, which was a little bit of a surprising decision and a negative, uh, decision certainly for the state of North Dakota. And so that's a significant development. Uh, that, that case will be appealed, that decision will be appealed to the North Dakota Supreme Court, um, and that'll, that'll take some time for that to get resolved. Excuse me. Then, uh, just literally this past Friday, uh, news came out that, uh, that the, you know, in this MDL, there's sort of representative plaintiffs' lawyers that are, form an executive committee, and the executive committee had filed a motion with the, uh, court to, uh, propose, uh, a process and a structure for an omnibus settlement, meaning potentially a global settlement of all the, all the opioid litigation in the country. So that's something that takes a little bit of a time and, uh, they suggested a, a hearing at the end of June to discuss the possibility of that settlement, how it might work and so forth. Um, you know, the proposal contemplates, uh, a process whereby cities, counties, uh, would, would have the opportunity to opt out of the settlement by a vote based on population and so forth, uh, but those details are yet to be determined. Um, it appears that states, the state lawsuits aren't necessarily in that motion. They're represented in the MDL as well, but, um, they're, sort of have a different committee. But, uh, it's certainly a probability that if they, if there's discussion about a global settlement, that'll include settlement for the states. And, you know, I think it's also, uh, one might assume that even though the case that the state of North Dakota has, uh, is been dismissed as a result of the judge's order, subject to appeal, um, any global settlement would presumably include all, all the states. I should point out that for some time, there'd been, I don't know, some, uh, five to ten states that hadn't initiated lawsuits, but in the last, uh, several months now, I think, uh, all but maybe three states had, had initiated lawsuits and I think even the three remaining ones are, are now, uh, talking about initiating, uh, a lawsuit. Cities and counties throughout the country, but certainly within North Dakota, have been approached by various sort of consortions of law firms that are represented in this MDL and have brought lawsuits on behalf of cities and counties. Um, and we've been approached by those thus far, uh, sort of opted to, uh, sort of align ourselves with the state and with the attorney general's office pursuing that. And, uh, I think, at least the sentiment then internally is that the city Fargo wants to stand with this, with the state and with the attorney general's office. It's hard to ignore, though, the, the recent decision by the district court in terms of analysis and that's probably something that the city commissioner will want to consider, uh, what, what the options are.
I think what was happening, Commissioner Strand, it got approached by some people that are the, I think, John, they're with the county right now in the lawsuit? Isn't the county joined them?
I'm not sure, mayor who has. I know they've approached the county, they've approached many cities.
Cass County has different representation than us in the lawsuit against opioids. We're with the attorney general and, and there are people, other people, so it came up as, since this was dismissed. I did talk to the attorney general and he said, you know, they're going to appeal it to the state Supreme Court. They think it will get favorable ruling from there. So it is a question, maybe you want to bring up the question you want to ask, Commissioner Strand?
Well, I, you know, and, thank you, mayor. I, when, when we were first approached by folks representing legal firms, my, my initial reaction was, um, this is far out of the realm what I thought public, uh, leadership and advocacy should be. I just didn't see us being litigious and going out and suing people to create a message. That said, since I've been at the table with the Public Health Department and representing the, Fargo City and dealing with the opioid issues, uh, in, in the capacity I do as a commissioner, I've, I've had my eyes opened as to how egregious their actions have been and how damaging the, the impacts are to people. You know, um, so, so I've turned a corner in a sense of I'm, I think it's, I think we need to join up with folks to, to correct this wrong, you know, much like the tobacco lawsuit. I don't know if I have thoughts or if we, where we would land. I think I'd lead, lead to leadership, lean to leadership and to our legal counsel, whether we stay with the state or whether we join with other cities or explore them, but, but I am clear right now that their actions are egregious and that the costs and the harms to society are so far-reaching and that this wouldn't have happened, best I can tell, without their, their skewed, uh, vision and greed in the healthcare system. So, so it's important that we, we address these issues. I, I'm, I'm in favor of us having this conversation now, uh, and, and making sure we're listening to our best advice about what, what is our best tact going forward, but, but they don't deserve a pass for, for their actions. That, that's where I am right now. The, the industry does not deserve a pass. These are real people and, and we have thousands and thousands of people affected by this, this, uh, this opioid epidemic and crisis. And yeah, we've gotten a handle on it for the moment present, but we aren't out of the woods yet. We aren't done yet. There's, there's, there's notices now of bad drugs in, in the cities where hundreds of people are with overdoses and just, I don't know, Chief Todd, if this has landed here or not, but, you know, knock on wood if it hasn't. Uh, you know, this last, most recent wave of, of tainted drugs. So I'm all for it. If you can accelerate and step Fargo up, whether we stand firm with the state or stand with other firms and, and make our message loud and clear, this is unacceptable to do this to our people, that, uh, that, you know, you're, you're, you're to be delivering health and helping people, not harming them.
Eric, can we reengage the attorney general? I have a written response to the question that basically Commissioner Strand is asking. Where are we going forward and how's this going to happen? And is there a question of should we join some other legal firm to help us out? So could we just, uh, visit with him next week maybe and perhaps Commissioner Strand could be on the phone call with you as well?
Certainly, yes, yep, and, uh...
That be reasonable?
And I was also going to just say with your permission, mayor and with, and the commissioners, I'd be happy to work with the mayor to sort of figure out, uh, an approach for going forward with this decision-making process.
Bring it back to the commission if there's any changes. To be fair. Any other discussion, any other business?
Well, there is, mayor.
Appointments we did at the beginning, twenty-six. That was the first one. It's been such a long meeting. Commissioner Strand.
Well, I don't want to let this slide. We have a birthday coming up. So on the twenty-eighth of this month, everybody look to our mayor and say, hey, I hope you're having a great day. Hope you're having a good birthday and we're wishing you the best.
Thank you, John. Motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second. All favor say aye?
Aye.